We have one, two, three, four, five. There's Eric. Oh, yeah. We got everybody. All right. Just want to check in. Ms. Schwanger, are you there?
I'll be filling in for her tonight. So if you, when it comes time to play the audio comments, I'll be able to do that. She's, she's busy with something else. So I'll try my best to take her place.
Okay. No problem. All right. Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock. Today is, is the time and place set for the November 2021 regular meeting of the Royal Oak Planning Commission. We'll begin by having people state their name for the record and where they are located as they're participating. Let's start with Mr. Klooster and we'll go around the board.
Eric Klooster, Royal Oak.
Woody Gantina in Royal Oak.
And Beiki Royal Oak.
Paul Curtis here in Royal Oak.
Mike Fournier here in Royal Oak.
All right. And I'm Gary Casada, and I am also in Royal Oak. I don't see Commissioner Douglas, although I expect her. But 7:01, so we'll, we'll proceed with the, with the meeting here. Let's start with this. Let's start with approval of the minutes for the September 14th. Remember, we didn't have an October meeting. So if we had a chance to look those over, I would look for a motion to approve, or if there are changes. Commissioners?
Still moved.
There are second?
Second.
All right. Any comments on this discussion? All right. Seeing none. See Anne shaking her head on the vote to approve the minutes of the September 14th meeting. Start with Ms. Beiki.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Now, Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Gantina?
Yes.
Mr. Klooster? Yes. And I'm a yes. So the meeting minutes from September 14th are approved. Before we move on, I think I should ask, it's not on here, but as a matter of course, is there anything that any of the commissioners or the department would like to add to the agenda tonight? All right. Oh, excuse me? Do they see a hand? Okay. Don't see anything. We might, we might have some discussion related to the, just from my point of view, related to the car wash proposal. We may have some discussion about light and sound measurements, but we'll see how that goes. All right. Are there public comments on non-agenda items?
There are no public comments on non-agenda items.
All right. Thank you. All right. Given that, I believe it's time to move on to new business. And this would be the public hearing for both the special land use and then the site plan proposed for Tommy's Express car wash at 31-800-Woodward and 31-908-Woodward. Mr. Twain, give us a per view.
Well, the planning commission may remember that you did see the proposed car wash at 31-800 at your August meeting. That meeting, you did approve the special land use as well as the site plan at that meeting for that particular property. Since that time, they've also gone to the zoning board of appeals and received the necessary variances related to that site and the plan. What's in, what's really before you this evening under the special land use? The petitioner has indicated they have an opportunity to buy the small property to the, basically to the north of this site. That's about 20 feet wide by the similar length in depth. And they would like to add that to the approval. And so the special land use portion would be in regards to that site and including it as part of the previously approved special land use. Secondly, there were some slight modifications to the site plan that we'll get into, but the real action this evening is whether or not, in terms of the special land use, whether the planning commission wanted to approve the parcel to the north to be included in that. And then there, then there are some modifications to the site plan that we've indicated in the site plan report as well as the special land use report. And I can go through those either now or at the time of the site plan, depending on your preferred option.
We've seen this before. I think the, I think let's, this is just my thinking, we should discuss that at the time of the site plan because the special land use, the use hasn't changed, but the site plan has changed. I think we should probably dispose of the site plan or the special land use first. Any other comments from the commissioners? Okay, let's do it that way. So, Mr. Twain, if that's all you have on your comments about the special land use, then we'll call forth the petitioner and hear from them. Is the petitioner, I see, I see Mr. Cowan here. Who else is here for the petitioner?
Can you hear me?
I can hear Mr. Cowan.
Okay, thank you. I do have with me in the room, and I believe they're on, they're also on their own computers, but, and they'll, we come to this one if necessary. I do have Cliff Lunny, who is the principal of Michigan Express, which holds the Tommy's Express franchise, Jordan Jonah, who is representative of the property owner, and also Eric Williams of Stonefield Engineering, who created and put forth all the plans that you see. First, I want to thank on behalf of Michigan Express, Tommy's Express, the planning commission for your approval in August, that then allowed us to go to the zoning board where we did receive approval of both variances. As we were moving through that process, Tommy's Express was able to identify the property owner of the Harvest Garden Restaurant who lived out of state. The family doesn't really want to continue the restaurant anymore. I know it's been there a long time, but they really thought Michigan Express that picking up that piece of property, even though it's only 20 feet, was an additional investment in the property and in the project that was merited and gave a little bit more elbow room, particularly as you look at the site plan with respect to the ingress and egress area has been expanded. But the building footprint remains the same. It's moved a little bit. Also, as you look at the plan, there was a movement of the dumpster and the two parking spaces. We kind of flipped those over on the other side of the stacking lane or, excuse me, escape lane that goes out to the alley, so that we think was an improvement. There are some minor improvements which we can discuss if there's any questions. We do want to make it very clear that the four items, as I pointed out in my letter, that the planning division staff brought up, we are amenable to amending all of those. We'll restore the landscape island and we actually, we're adding some additional landscaping where the six vacuum space would have went. So we're going to be up in excess of 16% coverage with landscaping when we submit the final plan to the department. We'll also reduce, we were going to add two vacuum spaces. We're only going to do one. So those are probably some of the, the highlights. We reduced the driveway back down to 30 feet as is required. So we believe that this additional investment is very positive. The changes we've made are improvements. The recommendations the staff made that we will, that we agree with are also additional enhancements. And we respectfully request your approval for special land use under 770-11C. We believe we continue to meet and exceed all of that criteria.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Douglas. I see you're here. Are there questions for the petitioner on the special land use? All right. Seeing none. Are there public comments on the special land use?
Yes, yes, there are. I'll go ahead and, and play those for you now.
Hello, my name is Leon Ochoa, and I live on Hunter Avenue, and I'm calling regarding case number SP 21-11-18 at 31908 Woodward Avenue. From the beginning, I've always felt this car wash on the Pier One land was too much for the footprint of the land. Now that the Harvest Garden property is being added to the project, this furthers my opinion that the car wash is too much for the property, Pier One property only. With the addition of the Harvest Garden to the mix, the franchise is not only adding to the car wash property, but killing a business that's been serving this Royal Oak area for the past 18 years. There are four car washes within two miles either north or south of Woodward Avenue. Two washers are within less than a half mile south of Woodward. How many car washes do we actually need in this area? I've been driven past the washes that are less than a half mile from this proposed site numerous times, and they are hardly busy at all. This doesn't seem to support the idea of building yet another car wash in this area. As a resident on Hunter Avenue, I feel that with this car wash operation, we, the neighbors, will have to put up with more traffic on this northwest corner of Hunter Avenue, adding to the already consistent travel going in, out of the Shell Gas Station on the southeast corner of Woodward and Hunter, not to mention the increased traffic in the alleyway. Not only will we have to deal with the noise emanating from the car wash from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. every day, we will have to deal with loud car exhaust noise, loud radios playing while customers are vacuuming their cars, and more than likely loud conversations between people that are using the car wash facilities. We are currently experiencing the same thing with the patrons of the Shell Gas Station that will be right across the street from the car wash, significantly adding to this nuisance. The issue with the sound barrier has never been satisfactorily addressed. The three-foot horizontal wooden fence that was proposed at the last meeting is nowhere near the height of a valid sound barrier. Unfortunately, we, the residents of the area, are not able to voice our opinions in real time due to the meetings being held on Zoom. And it appears that the council is not appreciating the issues that we, the people that live here, are facing with this new building. The sound barrier, according to the Royal Oak Planning Division website, requires a minimum six-foot-high missionary screening wall. Even the Shell Station's screening wall is at five feet, six inches. I feel the screening wall should be on the building's property so that the residents don't have to be subject, subjected to the sound inlet intrusions. The wall cannot be built on the east side of the apartment due to, apartment, east side of the alleyway due to the residents of the apartments that need a clear path from the alley to be able to park in front of their apartments. With that being said, I feel this is a major component that must be added to the site plans. The six-foot screen wall can only be built on the west side of the alleyway. It might be unfortunate the car wash plans need to be changed, but I feel this addition shows that the planning commission is listening to the residents of the area and working on our rehab. Thank you for the time to express my feelings on this project.
Regarding case number SP 21-11-18 at 31800-31908 Woodward Avenue. My name is Cynthia McAvoy, and I am commenting on tonight's planning commission meeting agenda for proposed Tommy's car wash. I don't see anything in the contingencies regarding noise level. And since approval for this car wash is based on unique circumstances, the design and placement will also have a unique impact on the adjacent residents. The daily operational noise to we, the neighbors, could be significant. Will the petitioner or planning commission please address how this noise will be muted? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Ollie, A-U-L-I-E. I'm a resident on Hunter Avenue in Royal Oak, calling about case number SP 21-11-18 at 31-800-31908 Woodward Avenue. It becomes to my attention that it might be turned into a car wash and expanded into neighboring properties. And I'm extremely against this happening because our street is already very busy because of the Shell Station, and we don't need any extra traffic from a car wash business right there. Also, I think that all of these people in the neighborhood, myself included, have drainage problems from water and from all the houses being close together. So it would just increase the amount of issues that we have in the neighborhood already about where our rainwater goes. And it's not a safe idea for the children. Also, the Harvest Garden Restaurant is a great restaurant, and they don't deserve to be addicted because another business wants to take their land. Please consider all of these points in your meeting, and we just, I just hope that you look out for the best interest of the residents in the neighborhood. Thank you. Bye.
This is Michael Barnes calling. I'm calling about SP 211118 at 31800 Woodward Avenue. We're very enthusiastic about the revitalizing of the Pier One site, but I am concerned that we are not utilizing time-tested tools to make a prudent decision about allowing such a change on an acceptable use of this property. Most, if not all, surrounding communities require the petitioner to provide a traffic study for a special land use permit. This study, at no cost to the city, would provide a level of service report with a grade A to F. My concern is not for cars coming into the car wash, but more on how cars will exit. Traffic lights will hinder this process, not certainly help it. The backup will most assuredly choose to use other exits up the block, thus blocking the other businesses. In conversations with MDOT, who has jurisdiction over M1, which is Woodward Avenue, they have told me that a traffic study will be required for their approval. Finally, this installation is proposed to be built on approximately 25% the size land where the same project is built on Brown Road. Seems like we're shoehorning in Tommy's Express car wash. Thank you.
That concludes the public comments for tonight's meeting.
Sorry, I was muted. Are there questions for the petitioner from the planning commissioners? Well, I'll start with a question from Mr. Twain. One of the public comments was that some communities require a traffic study for this sort of special land use. I'm just wondering, Mr. Twain, we, I take it Royal Oak does not require a traffic study? Could you please comment on that? We do or we don't?
There is no specific written requirement for a traffic study on this site. And again, there wasn't one required when you approved it in August for the entire site. So the planning commission didn't, didn't ask for one or require one.
There was also a comment that MDOT does require a traffic study. Is that, just for my enlightenment, is that, is that correct or not correct?
I have no idea what they're going to require on this site until it gets submitted to them.
All right. All right. Planning commissioners, any, Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I know. I was just reaching for the button. Mr. Twain, what you just said intrigued me. You say you don't know what MDOT will do when this is submitted to them. Just actually, for my own edification, what do we submit to MDOT and what say do they have in developments along Woodward Avenue?
Well, generally, the process is, is, is when a site plan is approved at this location, at some point after the fact, the petitioner will submit detailed engineering drawings to the engineering division that'll address compliance with the stormwater ordinance, the paving provisions that are required on, on site. And they'll also deal with the standard design configuration of Woodward. They will communicate with the Department of Transportation on, on what they see as the approvable engineering plans. MDOT may or may not have comments on those. My experience over the years, it has varied greatly, and that's why I say I don't know what their comments will be. On some sites, we've eliminated multiple driveways and narrowed them, limited them down to two. MDOT has come back and said they don't want any, and they want them to go out on the side street. And we have arguments and fights with MDOT about where traffic's going to dump. So, and our position is always that it should go to the Woodward Avenue area. So, and MDOT likes to limit curb cuts along their highway. So, it varies, I guess, is the short answer. And until it gets to them, I don't know what position they'll take.
So following up on that, over the years, we've approved a number of developments on Woodward. Were there any there? What percentage of those required a traffic study?
I haven't had any that, that we've required.
I mean, I mean that MDOT has required.
I can't tell you what they've required a petitioner to submit. I'm not aware of many that have modified the site plan configuration that has been approved by this body. Most have gone through as you have approved them. As I said, there's been, there were a couple of developments where your approval, MDOT wanted to modify or eliminate driveways. And we, and mostly to put it onto the side streets. And I've had arguments with them saying that's not going to happen. And they only, and I guess the fallback on it is, when we get into that, I tell them that we're not going to do any improvements to their right of way. We'll leave it the way it is. And, and they can go from there. If there's no improvements to their right of way, they have no basis to issue a permit. So either take what we've approved and given you, or we'll leave it the way it is.
Useful. Thank you.
Right. Other questions by planning commissioners for Mr. Twain or petitioners? And Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I'd like to move approval. As, sorry, we're approving the special land use first. And then, then, okay, move approval of the special land use.
Is there a second? Thank you, my Mr. Curtis. Thank you. Is there further discussion, questions for the petitioners or the department regarding the special land use? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote of the motion by Commissioner Douglas to approve the special land use. Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
Mr. Gantina?
No.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor? Ms. Beiki?
No.
All right. And I am a yes. So the motion passes. We have the special land use has been approved. Now we want to move on to the site plan. Mr. Twain, there's been some changes here. Please take us through them.
Okay. Obviously, you've added, they've added the parcel to the north. Basically, the vacuum stations have been relocated from the north part of the prior site onto that stretch. And they've also relocated the refuge enclosure to be accessible off of the alley up in that direction. Changes to the prior approved site plan are really in compliance with the planning commission's prior actions. One of the prior actions the planning commission discussed was light shining from vehicles turning into the car wash across the alley into the apartments. And you had indicated to flip the parking spaces, the two parking spaces with the escape lane. They have done that. They've also added that fence, site-upscaring fence that was requested previously, as well as additional landscaping in that southeast corner of the site to address prior issues the planning commission saw. The building did a shift a little bit north to help with the turning radius to lead into the car wash. Those are probably the biggest changes. We did note that the landscape island to the northwest of the site and the width of the driveway at the entrance to Woodward had been modified. But part of our condition, our recommended condition was to put those back, and the petitioners indicated they would and narrow that down. I think those are the majority of the revisions that have occurred on this property. So I guess to walk through it, the conditions or contingencies real quickly is, you're basically improving the escape lane encroachment into the setback along Hunter Avenue, where it used to have the two parking spaces. Those have been flipped. The driveway spacing along Woodward should be narrowed to 30 feet, as well as a landscape island placed at that northwest corner between the right of way and the vacuum station. And I believe they'll be eliminating one of the vacuum stations at that location. And then we have our standard contingencies on this part listed on the site plan.
Just, I want to talk about number four. Explain to your, why you did, why you added number four? So we know.
Well, the, the closest vacuum station to Woodward right of way appeared that any vehicle that might use it would be backing out over or coming across the pedestrian way. And we also wanted to see that landscape island put back there. So that, that's why, why we figured you had to eliminate at least one of those vacuum stations in order to accomplish those two recommendations or goals.
Okay. And that, that spaces the westernmost space that you're concerned about?
That's correct. And I, and I believe the petitioner has indicated they were more than willing to do that.
All right. Is there a contingency? Number 12 simply says the plan shall meet all other code and ordinance requirements. You have some specifics here. Number 10 is signage. Number nine is lighting. You don't specifically have sound levels, but that would be captured by number 12?
That's correct. Mostly sound issues are dealt with through the, as a nuisance. There are decimal reading limits that are in the ordinance. Generally speaking, the police department runs tests on those if they can make some determination. One of the biggest issues with noise is background noise and trying to separate noise that's generated from Woodward Avenue vehicles going by from what's actually being generated by the business or potentially the vacuum on site. So there are issues with addressing noise and noise complaints. But we, we, we do our best to accomplish that. And the same is true of lighting. Difference with lighting, the petitioner is required to submit a plan, and I believe you do have one that shows compliance with the ordinance. And that's referenced in your Um, and that's referenced in your packet.
Okay, well, we'll talk about lighting in a second. I wanna stick with the the sound issue. So unlike the lighting zoning ordinance, which says that uh the site plan shall demonstrate. Or show the the commission that the lighting plan will meet the ordinances. We don't have an ordinance that states. Or requires in such a situation where you have a noise-producing enterprise. Is that something that could be added as a contingency that? There's some demonstration, and how would they do that? How would the petitioner demonstrate that I'm gonna meet the uh decimal? Requirements?
Well, I, I think provision twelve or compliance with all other codes and ordinances. Uh, they're acknowledging that they're going to comply with all other ordinances as part of the approval. You know, whether they add a note to say they're gonna be with under this decimal level to their plan. I don't know if that adds any benefit to anyone. They are required to comply with the noise levels uh under the ordinance as well as anything else. They're required, by example, they're required to comply with uh the city's codes and ordinances for construction. But we don't, we don't include that on the site plan either. So there's a catch-all um in that last item. That they have to comply with everything else that's relevant.
All right, thank you. Um, are there other questions for uh? Mr. Twang or the petitioner from the planning commissioners? Ms. Beaky, was that a hand?
Yes. Yes, um, I, I have a question for the petitioners regarding the the decimal levels that are common at the car wash. And also if the cars that are stacked waiting are gonna be idling or 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 are they um? Do they turn off their engines while they're waiting?
Think you're on mute, Mr. Cohen?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let me address the decimal level, and I'll have Mr. Lunny uh. Pitch in on this, but the city ordinance at seven hundred dash seventy-four requires. That we do not exceed seventy-five decibels between the hours of six AM and ten PM. Well, we will meet that standard. If there's any complaint in that regard, there are measures that can be taken. Uh, to reduce uh the noise level. The problem, and I've had this situation with other properties on Woodward. Is Woodward noise is in the high eighties to low nineties from the vehicles. And it's very hard to distinguish the sounds, so um, but again, we will work. Uh, constructively, if there is any type of issue, we're required to meet that standard um, and we will. As, and I'll let Mr. Lunny, but I just wanted to jump in on the the idling of cars. Yes, they, they can't turn the vehicles off, but as you know, as I have with a new vehicle, is that it basically shuts off by itself. So the idling issues we used to have in the past, uh, until you restart the car or push the accelerator. So a lot of the idling issues we used to have in the past with modern technology of vehicles. Um, is dissipated, but we can't require people to turn off their. Uh, vehicles in in the winter time that turns off the heat and things of that nature. Um, but Mr. Lunny, I don't know if Joe can bring up or someone can bring up Mr. Lunny on the screen. Or if he needs to come over to my screen to address decimals.
He's available. He, he, he's available.
I can see.
If he wants to go ahead and unmute himself, he can do that.
Hello, you gotta hit mute. So the um, the the decimals that we currently see on Woodward, the the best example that we could get. Um, from research that we did, which was really, uh, I think an old study that we found on the internet on Woodward. Had the decimals roughly in the high uh eighties, as high as eighty-nine, uh, and as low as the mid, mid eighties. Our decimal, which would be at the borders um of any of the property lines. Um, at the high, we think it's gonna be seventy. Um, and should be below that, especially as you go closer to Hunter, it'll be much, much less than that. Um, and as you go towards Woodward, it obviously will get rounded out by Woodward, so you know. A- as uh Mr. Cohen had mentioned, you know, we, we will adhere to the uh ordinance and. We're not concerned, we will do every effort to make sure that that is met um as we are uh instructed to.
Thank you. Commissioner Douglas has a question.
So there are uh car washes like this elsewhere in the country, right? And uh have sound studies been done with those? I'm assuming the design of this is similar to those. I guess, Mr. Lundy?
Thank you. Uh, I'm, I'm not aware of um any other studies that have been done with the other car washes. Um, nor can I speak to um to the noise level other than I've used the other car washes. Um, and I've heard the noise levels. What I can say is that with the Tommy's Express, i- it is um. The technology um is, is very, very high-end and everything um. It is, is really uh top-of-line, so um we don't anticipate being any louder, and we should be less. Um, than anything that's currently uh in position on Woodward from our end.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm going to just, uh, oh, Mr. Curtis?
Yeah, I, I think I heard more than once Mr. Twang say that. Uh, I think the northwest corner will have a uh landscaping island that is. It's not currently reflected on the drawings we have, though. Is that correct? It's, it's. The drawings we saw looked kind of bare on that northwest. Is that right?
That's correct.
So, but it's understood that there to be added.
Yeah, it's one of the contingencies.
Yeah, that's what I understood you say. And then I think Mr. Cohen said early on something about. Sixteen percent landscaped. I, I don't remember from way back in August what that landscape percentage was. On the previously approved site plan. Does anyone know that number from?
Yeah, it was, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. It was around, I believe we reported it at fifteen point two percent. And with the landscaping we're adding and plus the one vacant space will be in, it's slightly in excess to sixteen percent.
Yeah, so things have gone up in terms of that. Yeah, thanks.
Other questions? I, I have one comment that I'd like to go back to before we leave the decimal and sound issue. So I did go out to Brown Road Tommy's, which I think is gonna be similar to this one. It's uh, it's. It is situated different, uh, but I was able to hear the decimal levels. I don't know how to uh measure those things. I was able to see the uh light levels as well, which I wanna talk about in a minute. Um, the Tommy's uh in, on the Brown Road. It, it's not very loud in most places. The, the noise comes from the vacuums, which are situated on one side. And the noise comes at the exit. If you remember last time, I believe Mr. Cohen was explaining that. Tommy's doesn't have people at the end of the tunnel wiping off the cars because it, the, the. The uh blowers are so powerful that they, apparently they don't need it, because it is loud at, at the exit end. The exit end in this case, in most car washes, the exit end where those blowers would be are facing the road. In this situation, we're facing north, because of the way it's situated, northwest, I should say, facing um. Some businesses, vacant businesses, but also there's some um, some distance away, there's, there's, there's houses. It's pretty difficult for somebody to go out there and say, geez, is that too loud or not too loud without some sort of a decimal? Meter and knowing how to use it, which I do not. Um, one of the things that I'm concerned about is that we have a petitioner who I think sincerely is interested to. Meet the requirements of the uh ordinance and not bother the neighbors. I have no doubt that is their intention. But it's, it's an after-the-fact, it's an after-the-fact. Mechanism we have here. That's all we have, is that if they build it and it doesn't comply, well, then somebody's gonna complain about it. Um, I guess I would favor some attention to that, perhaps specifically in the contingencies, is the thought there. And before I go into lighting, I'll ask if anybody else has any other comments, because I will signal that that's my next issue. All right, seeing none. So the lighting is a different issue. Lighting has a. A, a light plan that they're required. And I looked at the light plan, and uh I looked at the Brown Road. Facility. Now, the Brown Road facility has the same sort of canopies that are gonna be here, I believe. And what they have is a light, it's a bright light. It's about seven feet, maybe six and a half feet off the ground, horizontally pointing back at the cars to light the cars so you can back in them. And that doesn't appear on the plan here, so I'm gonna look for some discussion about that from the petitioner. Um, I did not feel, and again, I didn't have a, a light meter uh to measure. But it was my sense that those horizontal lights under the canopy that do not appear on these plans for, for Royal Oak. Were too bright and would in fact be too bright under our ordinance, and I'd like to talk about that. From the petitioners, can you address that?
Yes, um. Yeah, I thank you for, for bringing that issue up. First of all. Uh, since the time that the Auburn Hills property was constructed. The lighting package for the outside has changed uh for the Tommy's Express. That package or what you saw up at Auburn Hills is not being installed. And that's exactly why it was not shown on the planes. Instead, what will happen is there will be a light that is aimed downward. Uh, that will not uh shed out anywhere, uh, or certainly not onto any residential. Properties, because not only is it going to be facing downwards, but it also will be blocked by the building itself. But more importantly, those lights, what you saw up at Auburn Hills were on all the time. These lights are gonna be motion detected, uh, or motion sensors, so they will only come on. When someone pulls into the space to use the vacuums. So I think that that um, hopefully, I think will, you know, calm any concerns. Uh, certainly that uh I think was a good observation on your part, Mr. Chairman. Uh, but we're pleased to in-inform you that that's not what is gonna occur at the Royal Oak site.
All right, thank, I'd say this, uh, the, is the light package that you're contemplating under the canopies have the. Frosted plastic uh lenses on them?
I, I'll have to ask Mr. Lunny that, I'll have to defer to the technical points.
Well, the, the lights that are on, on do not have a shield. They have a.
Sorry about that, thank you. Um, yeah, they um. I think the easiest way to, to kind of explain the uh, the lights and how they work. Is that, if you think of your garage, where you might have that motion sensor and the, and the light. Sometimes you put it up higher and it will spread further out, but if it's down lower, it spreads straight down. That, that's what we have. It's a very uh similar uh white light that has um. You know, it has uh, I think roughly three lenses that's go straight down. And it's a motion, and it's, it's not very high. I mean, it's just enough where it's getting over your car in the front side there, and it, it goes right down to the ground. So when it's lit, it really just covers that parking space shooting straight down, and again, it is only motion. And um, the other ones that you did see were, were an older light. One of the things that happens is. You know, when you do these packages sometimes with, with the franchise, um. That, that can be done sometimes seventeen to eighteen months out, and so that's, even though it's, it's a recent open. Um, that package was probably, you know, done uh quite some time ago, and, and that was one of the concerns that, that, that. Um, others that had, and that's one of the reasons they did away with those lights.
Okay, but I appreciate that. My question was, do these lights that you're contemplating? Have a frosted lens? The, the, what, what I saw is an exterior frosted lens. There's no shield around it. It's an exterior frosted lens. Is that what, what you're gonna put in?
That is correct. The um, the lens, we can send the spec on them. I mean, the, 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 I think the most important thing to. Um, to note is that we will comply one hundred percent with, with the city's lighting ordinance. That's, that's no question that we would comply with that. These lenses um do not have anything on them that would, you know, shield them uh in any direction. I can't. Really alter that, but they sh- they shine straight down, so um. They're not very high. They're designed to really only spread the uh, as I mentioned. The width and the length of the actual parking space itself. And so that happens with the placement on them, so we can send that spec, and when you look at that spec, you'll kinda see that, so it doesn't. Retrude out, like the other ones were up high, and they actually didn't even go down. They went sideways and um. You know, that, that was uh obviously an issue.
You intend to mount them on the vertical pole? Oh, you're muted there. Question for Mr. Looney is, do you intend, do these go on the vertical pole?
Y- y- yes, they will go on the pole, but they will go um. So the top of the pole has like a, a red design on the top. And I'm not sure, I, I, I do have a picture here. I can try to show it. Um, not sure how good it will show, but. So this is the top of the pole right here. You can see the light is right below that pole. And it shield, and it, it shines right down here, and then the top part is the motion detector, so that would detect the motion. And then those three lights would shine straight down. So where the other one that you saw was up here facing this way. This one is significantly lower and then shooting straight down.
Well, all right, thank you for that. I would say this, a curved set of lights with a exterior. Frosted lens on them, it's almost impossible to shoot them down. You need shielding. So I uh, that's my opinion, and there's, like I said, it's difficult to measure those things without rules about the. Uh, light meter, anything like that. I guess I would say, I, I don't, I don't make the motions, but I would be. Uh, very inclined to, to hope that somebody would add a, a contingency to the site plan that the uh lights. Not be placed on the pole, but be placed on, on the structure above, so they actually can shoot down. Uh, but that's my opinion. Any other questions for the petitioner? All right, having no other comments, is there a motion? Questions, comments, motions? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I'm, I'll move approval of the site plan with the contingencies ad, as listed. Um, I, I hear your, your um thoughts, Mr. Casada, but I am satisfied with um uh, conditions nine. All exterior lighting fixtures shall comply with the zoning ordinance and other city codes and ordinances. Um, I, I, I think our building inspectors are pretty sharp and um. Um, firm in these things, and I'm just, I'm confident that uh the applicant will uh comply. Or be forced to comply, so I'm not inclined to add that contingency, um, but I'll make the motion and see what others say.
All right, so your motion is to uh approve the site plan with the contingencies as listed by the department?
Yes.
All right, is there a second? Mr. uh Klooster, is a second, yes? Okay, we have a second. Is there discussion? To be had here? Commissioner Douglas?
Uh, yeah, this is essentially the same plan that we looked at um back a couple months ago, only slightly better. They've. Uh, incrementally increased the amount of landscaping, the acquisition of the uh business to the north of them lets them. Um, uh, solve some of the access issues that were concerns of ours before. Um, I had no objection. I, I approved of it then, and I approve of it now. I, I think this is a, an acceptable use. In the general business zoning, which is what we find on Woodward. Um, and Woodward is the kind of place where we would expect to find businesses like car washes, so I'm. I'm fine with this proposal.
Ms. Beaky?
I just wanna make a comment. I did miss the August meeting, so I, I did not hear the uh previous discussion, and I would just like to say that I, I'm not gonna support this. Uh, site plan as I did not support special land use, because I, I believe that. Given the other car washes nearby and given the um noise both from the blowers, blowers from the vacuums. Even, even with the, the Woodward noise, I think um. It's too intensive a use given the nearby residents. And the Woodward Avenue has through the arc of time been widened, and it's in a very wide state right now, and again, we have a forty-five mile an hour. And again, we have a forty-five mile an hour um. Speed limit which people exceed a lot, and I think the whole corridor needs to be reconsidered in terms of um. Both noise and and use in terms of um how it benefits our whole community. Um, so I'm not going to be supporting this site plan.
Any other comments from the commissioners? Well, before we call for the vote, I'm going to make a comment here, I'm also not going to be supporting the motion as stated, and here's why. If if uh this use, and let me just back up. I I agree with Commissioner Douglas, this is an appropriate use for the Woodward Corridor. Uh, and if. The the plan complies with the light and decibel uh requirements of the ordinance. Then there's really not much to complain about because it shouldn't be offensive. But this is a inherently noise and light producing use enterprise. And I think special attention needs to be given uh to those aspects of it. If you go up and down Woodward, you'll see that Jax and Super Car Wash, the other car washes have added obnoxious lights. That I I I have to imagine do not comply with our ordinance. And I think the uh danger of that happening here is very acute as well as the noise, and I just think it should get special attention. And I think the two contingencies that I mentioned should be in the site plan, uh so I'm not going to support it as moot. Any other comments before I call for the vote? Mr. Douglas?
Well, I would like to address the Commissioner Bicky's comment, um and she and I have talked about this offline. And and I think uh both agree that there are changes that need to be made along Woodward Avenue, improvements that can be made. Um, but I don't think we can stand in the way of development waiting on the on the if come that something might change on Woodward. Um, that could be years in the making, um, we're trying to um uh uh improve Woodward. We're trying to reduce vacancies and um bring tax revenue into Woodward. Um, and I I think this is, as I said before, an appropriate use for general business zoning. Um, and and so I I wouldn't want to let that future consideration stand in the way of approving developments. Um, as they come to us now, um to Mr. Casada's comments about lighting. I think if you put a used uh car lot here as you could very easily, you would find a great deal of lighting. Um, that might be even more um offensive than what this very modern design franchise business is offering.
Appreciate that, in quick rebuttal, I'd say I'd make the same comment for that server uh of of a proposal, but okay. Uh, any other uh comments? Mr. Curtis?
Yeah, I'm I. I am sympathetic to the notion that the Woodward Corridor could be a better corridor in Royal Oak. I really believe that's true and I sure hope that's coming, however, I agree with the notion that. You know, here we are today with um a vacant property for, I think, three years, um, something like that. And uh, you know, in my profession, that's as big a hindrance to the quality of life uh for residences as anything. Um, and and to the comments, uh you know, about the idea of lighting and, you know, other car washes. I guess my thought is um. If there's enforcement issues with other businesses on Woodward, then that's for the city to enforce on those businesses on Woodward. As it would be this new business uh and enforcement issues. But but the thought that there could be other businesses violating some ordinance doesn't seem. Um, really fair to the petitioner to to hold that against them. Uh, I guess the city needs to go wrestle with enforcement if that's the case on on other businesses, car washes you mentioned. So anyway, I will be in support of the motion as as uh given.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, I'm not a repeating, but I mean, you know, I understand, I also think that we can do some pretty remarkable things on Woodward. And I think the future is bright for Woodward. Uh, when we start to coordinate with the state and some of the things they're looking to do and coordinate in the communities, that's ten, twenty years out before we really start to see that work. Um, really take a foothold and and really start to create some dimensional optics that, you know, are transformational in the in the corridor there. I will say, people need car washes, I can't think of another place, um, you know, in the city where something like this would make sense. Uh, it is the first highway, it's uh where the Woodward Dream Cruise is. Um, and it certainly is an improvement, like Mr. Curtis said, over, you know, a vacant building there for for three years. Um, and and I think that um, you know, it'll it'll be a good addition as far as lighting and sound, I I understand that completely. I do think though that um you have a couple of things going on in Woodward, one, I don't see necessarily people getting car washes at three AM. Uh, they're probably not going to be operating uh that late. Um, and I think that um there is a lot of lighting and noise already on Woodward, I think you mentioned that, you know. Um, you know, we have vehicles going up and down, I mean, it's an overall issue, but I I don't see this as being or leading any sort of light pollution. Or um noise pollution, uh given the other things we have going on on Woodward. Um, and I do see it as a necessity, I mean, we need to wash our cars. And as we become more electrified, uh, you know, here in the US, cars will be quieter as we get to start stop functions, it will be quieter. So I'm optimistic that um this is a good call, uh is it ideal, does it fully transform? Uh, Woodward, the entire corridor of what we dream of it in ten, twenty years? No, but it's still a necessary service that people need of all the car washes out there, it's a good one, it's environmentally friendly. Um, so I think um, you know, I'll be supporting it uh for those reasons.
All right, any other comments from any of the other commissioners? Before I call for the vote, okay, I am going to call for the vote. Uh, let's start with Ms. Bicky.
No.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
And Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
And Mr. Grantina?
I'm a no.
And Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
And I am no, as previously stated, the site plan uh passes with the contingencies as listed by the department. Congratulations, look forward to your spacey car wash, it is very uh fetching design. All right, thank you.
Fetching?
Fetching, that's a word. They use that with architecture, this is kitschy architecture, but. All right, um. Next order of business, we're done with the uh projects and now we're going to talk about the request for qual qualifications for the new master plan. If we can, Mr. Twang, tell us about, tell us about what you've given us, uh just for the record here. We have a new master plan request for qualifications, it's about a couple of pages in a paragraph. Um, I'm not sure this is the request for qualifications, by understanding this is sort of a a sketch of it. And I guess I'd like to uh just to telegraph this, Mr. Twang, I'd like to, I'd like to have you walk through what this is. And then we're also going to want to talk about the process, what we're going to do with this RFP. Uh, how we're going to distribute it, why we're why we're doing what we're doing, who's going to get it, who's going to review it? What is the process, I'm going to want to put that on the record, so please proceed.
Uh, well, we did, we did put together a draft uh master plan request for qualifications as a, as a very preliminary initial step. And in the process of coming up and and developing a new master plan. Um, I did have Joseph Murphy has uh put it together. Uh, so I I'll let him walk through what's in it and the thoughts behind what's in it. Uh, we have gone over it, and I think when we're when we're done with that, when, but I think in order to keep it in sequence. I would like the planning commission to actually act upon the request for qualifications either as submitted. Or as uh you may want to modify it this evening, so that we have action on that, can move forward. Terms of the dates and things in it, uh we didn't put any specific timeline in it at this point. I I think the responses will be due sometime after the first of the year, but what we have to coordinate with is how we get it out. Where it gets out to, what sorts of publications or websites we may be able to get it on and what their deadlines are. So I won't be able to tell you um when it'll actually hit the uh distribution list. Uh, we do have a preliminary list of people that we would send it to, um, and that's not a, not a big deal. Um, but I I think it'll be due probably sometime in January. Uh, at at the latest sometime in February, depending on when those. Websites and other things that have deadlines and when they put these things in that I can't control, uh that we'll put this out. But before we get into a discussion of where it's going to go after this, I I would like to resolve this issue and move it forward. And then we can talk about whatever other process items uh uh you want to get into rather than spending a lot of time on. Uh, on that and until you get done with this, but anyways. So if you don't mind, I'll have Joseph walk through it real quick with you and then we'll.
Sure.
We can modify it, get an action on it, that'd be great.
Thanks, well, as Tim stated, we developed the draft RFQ or a request for qualifications. In our efforts to retain a a consultant to to help us develop a new master plan and um. We're looking for the planning commission's affirmation of the draft or some modest modifications. And the intent is really to identify firms with expertise, experience and and vision that can assist us. And they convey that through the responses that they provide to the RFQ. Uh, the city and the interested firms, this is like the non-committal stage. And and we strongly encourage the planning commission to uh, to we'll say not overthink this process, step of the process. Um, we we do hesitate from. We would hesitate from referencing any specific terms um. Such as accessory dwelling units or or reference to fifteen-minute neighborhoods or multifamily developments on transportation corridors. And a lot of these, the reason is that these terms imply uh an an outcome of the master plan when we haven't even solicited public engagement. Or conducted any research. A lot of these firms that have been able to assist us, they may have new concepts or practices that we're completely unaware of. But it's our job to evaluate their submittals and determine if uh if we believe they have the skill set and creativity to assist us. So this is really their opportunity to put their best foot forward without any limitations uh or being restricted. We'll review those submittals and re and narrow down a list of firms. Uh, those firms would be eligible to provide a bid response to a request for proposals or the traditional RFP process. And the RFP is certainly the place to reference specific elements or components that we want to include in a master plan. If all, if all the members of the planning commission are are interested in reviewing the responses to the RFQ. We can schedule a separate work session and alternatively, uh if the, if you want, you can form a subcommittee of three members. Uh, it's important to note, as Tim had talked about the the process and starting that process. This is where the commencement process and we need to follow different provisions in the state enabling uh act. And that includes a staff providing and distributing notice that the city intends on starting a new master plan. And we distribute that notice to nearby communities, the county, um, public utilities. Uh, regional and state transportation agencies, uh groups of groups of that nature that are covered under the state act. So again, we're looking for the affirmation of the draft language as presented or some modest modifications. Uh, and then comments as to whether you'd be interested in forming a subcommittee. Or if all of the members of the planning commission would be interested in reviewing the responses. And if that's the uh, if that's the case, then certainly there would, that would be appropriate to have a a special meeting to conduct that review.
All right, uh, Mr. Curtis?
I just a question for Mr. Murphy. I appreciate the uh the idea of not wanting to limit the responses when you you in this RFQ, as you mentioned, by listing specific concepts. Um, a- again, I also appreciate the notion you you threw in there about not wanting to assume some outcomes, right? Like, that makes perfect sense to me, but then in the same discussion, you mentioned when an RFP is ready to draw up. There might be the place to start getting more specific, and I guess I don't understand why. Again, it's be, you know, the RFP happens way before public engagement happens, what's the difference in your mind? That the RFQ shouldn't be too specific, but the RFP could be more specific, I just didn't follow.
The RFP responses, they would be including a bid price uh to do different components of the master plan. So we would certainly want them to be aware of the components that we were expecting. And uh, because that's going to affect their their prices uh per different stages or different uh elements. But the RFQ is is really very intended to be very broad and allow companies the ability to um to show us the work that they've done. And and also a very important are the partnerships that they have formed in order to accomplish similar um. Similar master plans for other communities, because no one firm is going to be able to to do all of the work. Uh, there there may be, may very well be national firms that are interested that want to partner with local firms that have expertise and knowledge. And are in closer proximity to do a lot of field work that's necessary. And I, as many master plans uh now seem to have a a lead. Uh, agency with expertise in in the basis of land use, the basics. And they they oftentimes have partnerships with. Communication firms that specialize in public engagement. Uh, is as planner, that's that's not my specialty and it's an extremely important component of a master plan. Which the city commission and the planning commission have affirmed that, so we're we're really truly looking for them to provide us with. Uh, who they may be able to partner, partner with to accomplish all those different elements. And um specific examples so that that we can look at it and determine whether we believe that. The lead firm has the ability to partner to to cover all the bases that we want.
Curtis, again, just a quick follow up and just as my wheels are turning, listening to Mr. Murphy's statements. Um, yeah, I think too much specificity in the RFQ kind of tips our hand and lets firms, you know, kind of cater their. Their supposed qualifications towards things they think we want to hear as opposed to actually finding. Uh, you know, qualifications that we think are attractive by being more general, so I appreciate that point.
Yes, and and when uh we, we collectively, uh, we narrowed down, I I imagine we'll get a fair number of responses. And when we pare those down to, um, I'm going to grossly say a handful. Uh, we can bring them in for conversation and um certainly. Certainly get more details that you might be interested in, but you're right, this is, this is a really broad aspect, a broad element of of the the process and to start it.
Well, if I could to it, what I would add to it is some of the things that that have been included in the draft, um. You know, uh, hyperlinks and links to prior master plans that are done. Part of the review processes or qualifications will be to look at what they've done in the area of certain. Specific things that are important to the planning commission without coming right out and telling them. So if if they've done, you know, twenty master plans in the last five years and they've done a great job. And and what they've done in those looks and covers, I don't know, I'll throw out form-based codes or something or the or the. The transit oriented development, if it looks like they've addressed those in a fashion that we want to see something similar to. That'll be part of our evaluation of their qualifications prior to putting the RFP together with them. So it it does keep us a little bit behind, but looks at their, how how qualified are they and in what areas? So and then I think the RFP part is where we will get specific on. So they can cost it out in a sense of things like, is the master plan going to, at the end of the day, have to be interactive and. Put on the website rather than a static document like we have now? Is it going to have to have, what's it going to have to have a certain component so that they can bid on it? So we'll get into more detail there, but.
Ms. Bicky?
Um, I appreciate the differentiation between the request for qualifications and the request for proposal. And and I agree very much so in the um, the need for both uh passes at at this and in the process. Having both bid on uh multimillion dollar projects as well as manage them under federal grants and uh federal contracts. Um, I believe that the synergy we're looking for with whomever ends up winning through the process. Um, and the groups that consider this deserve uh an opportunity to see a little bit more about Royal Oak. And a little bit more about the things that our community already values. Based on, as I presented in the um list I sent out and I'll refer to some of them, our current master plan. Um, that some of the work we've done in water, the sustainability we're doing, the the retired, the living. The the ri- the aging in place type work. And all of those things are not tipping our hand so much at what would be in the RFP, which is what you're going to measure their competitive costing. Um but rather allowing firms to understand some of the um. Some of the uh things that make Royal Oak unique and some of the things that we stand for as a community so that they're going to be. Shifting and kind of sorting themselves out when they um but take the time to do the RFQ. To do just a wide collection of any range of organizations puts a lot of burden on. You as staff to go through those things. Um and it makes it much harder, I think, to pick. A well-qualified group to then bid on the RFP competently. Um having lived in Boulder, Colorado, when they did a lot of their long-term planning and I lived there for ten years and 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 speaking of corridors such as Woodward, which do take twenty, ten, twenty years. To project out, I think we need to um to signal the kinds of things we're looking for. And that we're trying to build on our current successes, but actually um improve. And things like working with MDOT and and on the, I think those things need to be not specified as far as the actions we would dictate a firm would recommend to us. But rather what our overall synergies are and what we're looking for um as a community. So I think there should be more specificity in there and also based on some just basic research of other RFQs, not RFPs. Um, I just think it's a fairer process.
All right, thank you. Other comments? All right, I uh I want to take a step back, if you don't mind, and just make sure for the record, this is. This is a uh I think I think most people on this Zoom call are familiar with the process. The public may not be, and I guess I just want to make that uh clear. What we have here for RFQ, correct me if I'm wrong, staff. Uh we're really looking for who might be interested to serve as our consultant. And even to step back further. You need a consultant because cities our size or any size, you don't do a master plan by yourself. You get a professional consultant to come in. Pretty much every community wants to do a master plan, is going to get a professional consultant. It's the nature of the process. So we're, I think this process, the RFQ is find out who's interested, if I'm correct about that. And then when we get. Submissions that people say, hey, I'm qualified, I'd be interested, then we would have a process through staff activity as well as potentially. Work session to pare the group down of potential competitors to some number, whether it's three or five or eight, whatever it is. And then those groups, we're going to say, okay, you're you're in the playoffs. You guys are are going to make proposals that we're going to pick from. Is that fair? Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, and and I think this question about, you know, leading the um leading the bidders, I mean. Maybe Miss Beeky has uh some insights to this, but wouldn't, I mean, if you're bidding on a big deal like this, wouldn't you go back and review the meeting minutes of every planning commission meeting? Um and if you wanted to assert a stronger position, you would go back and watch a video as appropriate. And so whether we put something in there or not, um they're going to do their homework on everything, right? Am I mistaken with that?
One. Yes, that's kind of uh my approach to it. One of the ways to evaluate them is. How much do they really know about the community when they submit their qualifications? If we tell them everything about the community, if we give them, here, look at this plan, look at that plan, look at this one. Uh we're leading them along and I think I think a way to exclude people is make them do their homework. Make them find what's important in the community and see if they did it. How much time are they going to spend on reviewing those sorts of things? So tell them what we're really looking for and and. And they should spend some time making phone calls, asking things and 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 doing some research on their own.
All right, and I have another question for the department. Is this a necessary threshold gateway? Somebody who does not respond to the RFQ would not be eligible to be in the playoff for an RFP. Is that correct?
Correct. That's correct. So that means to narrow it down to a certain number that have either been interviewed by. A subcommittee of the planning commission, by staff, if you don't want to be involved, or by the entire uh planning commission as far as uh narrowing it down. I don't know how many we're going to get. If we get five, if we get twenty, I I don't know what we're going to get, so.
Okay, well, that leads me to my next question about who are we uh directing this to? What is the method for uh advertising it? If a planning commissioner says, you know what, uh I want to make sure so-and-so gets it. Is it okay to send it to him? Is this a pu- is this open to every single uh uh master plan consultant in America? In the world, in Michigan? How what what is your what is your price for reaching people?
Uh well, yes is the answer. It's open to anyone and everyone. Uh obviously, we're going to post it on the same places that the city posts all. Uh it's it's opportunities to bid. We're obviously going to get reach out to all the. Uh planning organizations, both the APA, the national level and interstate level. Um if you have specific consultants that uh you think could do a good job, that's fine. We have a list that we're going to send it to. It is open initially to everyone.
All right, Mr. Curtis.
Uh and I appreciate the question about how far and wide, because if you don't respond to the RFQ, you're shut out from the RFP. And of course, again, for the public uh uh request for qualifications is what RFQ means and request for proposals. It's what RFP means. So uh but yeah, there are professional organizations that these firms that are qualified to do this kind of work are constantly reviewing. My question, though, just out of curiosity, you know, my first time around here, is there a expectation between? Um when an RFQ goes out, wh- how long it takes to do a review? And of course, that depends on how many responses you get, I'm sure. But h- how long does the staff envision between this RFQ going out and the RFP going out? Is there any guesstimate?
I I I i- you you've hit on all the button points. First is how many do we get back? Second is who's doing the review? If it if it's just staff, is it the entire planning commission? Is it a subcommittee of the planning commission? Uh so i- it's, it there's a lot of factors that will weigh on that. Uh I think it's important to do a quality review and get a quality list, not necessarily worry about. Whether it's a month to get it done or whether it's three months to get it done.
Um Commissioner Douglas and then Mr. Gantina.
Thanks, Mr. Casada. I I'm very happy we're approaching this uh in this stepped fashion, starting with. Uh requests for qualifications. I think this approach will bring a larger pool of very qualified applicants. Um because it's, you know, there's a lot of work that goes in and Miss Vicky will know this. There's a lot of work that goes into writing a proposal where you're developing prices. And putting a staff together and a timetable together. Um and that's a lot of work and a lot of the uh of firms, of planning firms. Uh knowledge that goes into that. But a a request for qualifications um is a little bit easier to do. Um and I agree with Mr. Twing when he says that um rather than telling them what we want, I want to see them. Figure out what we're all about and demonstrate their um analytical ability. I've I've reviewed many proposals in my career and um the ones that win me over are those that are about me. Or in this case, are about the city of Royal Oak and demonstrate a feel and an understanding for what our priorities are. Um so I'm 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 happy with that approach. I'm going to go back to something Mr. Murphy said, just to to pull it out even more. And that is the importance of public engagement in this process. Uh we, as we look at the the firms that bid on this and and they're. Likely subcontractors, um I'm going to be zeroing in on their public engagement process because. It's interesting, the advent of Zoom meetings, digital engagement has really expanded the planner's toolkit in terms of. The ways they can elicit information and responses from people. There are people who won't come to a a nighttime charrette. But can sit at their desk, at their computer and um uh participate in this fashion. So I'm really going to be looking for some innovations and uh um uh successful projects they have done with abundant public engagement.
Okay, Mr. Gantina.
Uh yes, so that's actually a good segue. Uh so I'm a little bit torn as it as it relates to the um conversation around specificity in the RFQ versus RFP. Uh I certainly appreciate and understand the differentiation between the two. Uh however. Yeah, I I guess um I I would hate for a uh potentially unique needs that. Um we we do know about to not be included uh in an RFQ. And thereby sort of um not highlighting a unique firm, a unique firm's ability to serve those needs. And specifically referring to um some public engagement that we've already done as it relates to the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan. We had a pretty significant public engagement um uh process that went on over four hundred fifty respondents. Um that did give us some insight into what the community is interested in. Um I do think out of that, there's potentially some some unique uh needs and drivers that could make their way into an RFQ, which would. Uh hopefully lead us to um the right firm. I do agree that uh as it relates to um the note that Miss Beeky had sent earlier, I think there's a lot of great information in there that probably is more appropriate for the RFP. Um but I do think there's probably some unique specificity that could go into the RFQ that may bring us firms that are main. That may be more uniquely suited to our needs.
Miss Beeky.
Uh and again, a lo- a lot, a lot of my working experience has been also with local government and local government um. Um community development, economic development and and local government service delivery, um as you all know. And I have to remind and remember, there's a very big tension that emerges with this idea of starting a public engagement. Process as if it's a blank slate process when it's not. We know where we are today. We know we have documentation where we've been in the past and where we hope to go. And we have those concepts built on public engagement like we've seen through the sustainability and climate action planning. Built on the previous um building of the master plan where people indicate that neighborhoods, they want to be strong. Built on the downtown development authority authorities' work to keep our downtown strong. So we have a lot of pieces and parcels that in, I've already been on this commission, it's coming up on three years. And I spent a lot of time looking for documents, reading the documents, assessing the documents. An average person or a firm bidding should not be. Meant to go and like hunt and find, if we can articulate in a broad way. Some of those concepts, and again, the ones I'll I a couple of just mentioned for the record, where did I put them? Like I was saying, we know we like never neighborhood preservation, that's important to people, they talk about it. Aging in place. Integration of different kinds of transit, we consider ourselves walkable. We should let people know that. We're one of the most walkable communities in the state of Michigan. Again, the downtown, the green space, our parks, the tree canopy that comes up again and again, the most attended um public comment in our environmental advisory board. Is about the tree canopy. We shouldn't hide those things and cast a wide blind net. When we know that we want people to come to us, that we should trigger their interest and we know we're building on something that exists. And I don't want to mislead the public when we start this master planning process, that it's just like everything is starting from scratch. That's not how it works. We're building on the past, we have constraints from the state, we have constraints from the county, and those things should be part of the process. Um and so the public engagement, I think, is to help prioritize, help them understand how to make, to listen to them about their specific neighborhoods. Help them engage more in some of those specific details, but I don't think that um. I don't think casting a overly uh or or presenting an RFQ that's overly um simple. Will get us further in that next step. I think we need to have an RFQ process that's reasonably constrained and reflective of the nuances of our community. And if you read, for example, the work that um Mr. Murphy does on on the community um block grants and such. There's a lot of nuance and detail that are in these various documents, but if we don't help people see that, and again, I'm not trying to tip our hand. We still are going to go through a process and come up with a plan that reflects the past and the future. But letting people know where we are now, it shouldn't be a secret. It's going to be too hard to analyze those qualifications. Because they won't have enough synergy with our our um needs. And then the the, I agree, the RFP, I understand you collect. Then it's very specific, we expect a plan, this much engagement, so that the budget and such can be compared um. But I don't think that leaves out making this qualifications a little bit more specific.
Mr. Douglas.
Sorry, I forgot to ask earlier. Uh uh Mr. Twing, Mr. Murphy, uh are you, will the um. Will we be separately bidding uh rewrite of our zoning ordinance and zoning map? As part of this overall process, looking to the firm we choose to provide that whole array of services?
Uh I think what the zoning ordinance will be needed to rewrite and be rewritten at the. What what that'll entail at this point, until you're done with the master plan, I really don't know. Uh obviously, the firm or firms that are selected to do the master plan. Will have a heads up on how to make those revisions. Uh but that's a totally separate activity, a total separate uh. You know, i- they won't need the same subconsultants on it. Uh it will take someone uh that knows how to write ordinances to actually write that versus a plan thing. So I I until we get further through the master plan, I I can't really say. How much will get rewritten? It could be totally thrown out and or they may decide based on the. The plan, there's only certain portions that need to be adjusted, so. That'll occur, I think, later.
Do you think that the budget that the city commission has established is enough both for a master plan and a zoning ordinance rewrite ballpark?
No, not if we're redoing both in totality. I think I think given what the I'm hearing from the. Commentary from the city commission and the planning commission um with all of the community engagement. With all of the extras that are going to be part of the final uh master plan. Uh three hundred thousand is going to go in a heartbeat for the master plan. Uh and then if we totally rewrite the zoning ordinance, that's going to add to that.
Okay, thank you.
Miss Beeky.
Just one brief point of clarification. Um when I, when I'm listing these areas of interest include, but are not limited to in the. I'm listing those as it not even to say that they might make it to the RFP, but rather to provide. Um to to clue people to give us the plans that would rel- to demonstrate their experience in those specific areas in case we need them. Rather than in help them understand those, for example, if they select some master plans to submit, that they would have those areas if they have that type of experience. And regarding the budget and also the idea of doing the zoning and master planning um and giving the work that we just are in the process of on the sustainability. And also the fact that the parks plan is coming up. I I don't know if anyone has talked or we can talk about um whether or not we'd want to combine those plans. The city of Ferndale, for example, right now is working on their master plan, their climate plan and their um. One other, social justice or something um together. And again, they're smaller communities, it's a it's different context. But we do know our park plan is coming up and obviously a lot of our land is park space and green space. And so I wonder if there'd be some synergy to combining the two um to better articulate and and bring together those various actions. Because again, all of this planning, the only purpose of it is to actually guide actions and help us make better decisions. Um and so the more those things are coordinated in my mind, the better off it is. Um it's it's easier to follow for people.
All right, um, Mr. Curtis.
Uh well, listening to Miss Beeky and uh also Mr. Gantina. And I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth about. Uh the notion of kind of helping people see who we are and what would be helpful to us. I I get, but I guess my question, I have a question. Maybe it's from Miss Beeky because she said, used a phrase like a little more specificity. Well. Like what 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 is a little more specificity? What what kind of, uh Mr. Murphy had mentioned the idea of some modest. Changes to language. Is there a a way to make a little more specificity that is a modest change? What 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 are our thoughts on that?
You want me to reply or? I I mean, specifically, the things I think is is simply making the list of recent plans and studies that we have. That supposedly are the foundation of how our actions are and many of which have public input so that people can find them and actually, you know, have a chance to see them. And then as I listed, um and the memo I sent, again, just for ease of sharing information. I have a few years, many of you have many more. I hear some of the same things repeated, again, neighborhood. Again, neighborhood preservation, the aging in place, we were missing transit oriented development, but there is a huge study from two thousand sixteen. And so to pick up the threads of these things we've been discussing and to put them out, doesn't say we're going to require them in the planning, but I would like to have respondents who submit their qualifications. Understand, we're looking for these things. So if they have good examples, I'd rather see those than an example they would send to Madison Heights to create a downtown because they don't have one right now. That's a different kind of planning. It's a different need. And, and so all firms are not the same. All cities are not the same. We all have aspirations to serve our communities. But I would like to signal to the firms who provide their qualifications, the kinds of things we contend with, stormwater management, the fact that our sewer and our sewer and our waste, our water is still combined. These kind of things are important for them to understand because it relates to our land use. And I would not want to read just random qualifications from random companies who don't know what we need as a community, because it's just the mismatch in the time doesn't make sense to me. Because this is a arduous process, even providing the qualifications. And the same for us to review all of these things. I'd rather see people respond to some understanding of our needs and, and only present those things that are relevant to us. Does that decrease creativity? I don't think so. Does it eliminate places again that are talking about a Novi development or because I do think there's differences.
Mr. Curtis.
Yeah, and, and that's, I'm hearing that, you know, why? I'm asking what, you know, and I don't know what the answer is. When you say a little bit more specificity, that was your phrase. Then, you know, there's a lot in the memo. That feels like a lot more specificity to me. So I'm just wondering what, what modest change, or if it's not a modest change, it's not a modest change, but what could we offer here as a planning commission to actually push this forward tonight? I don't know. That's my question.
I guess I think what I submitted was modest, a list and then the list of documents. It didn't seem like very much to me, but.
The comments? I'll make one. I think that there might be some concern about talking about preferences as opposed to history. I think history should be accessible if somebody wants to look at it. And so I note that the draft that, that the department provided does have about the city. And I guess I think that could be expanded on a little bit along the lines of Ms. Beeky's talking about. We had this study. We had these trends in development, things that would be history factual. Things that have actually happened in our development that would tell somebody about, you know, our, our, our trends in population. Whatever might be useful to somebody to find out if they, if they're interested to tackle this particular type of community. I would stay away from preferences myself signaling those things, but your actions, as Ms. Beeky said, your actions are going to signal some of your preferences. But that's okay, because that's what actually happened. I don't know how deep you want to go into it. I think that the, the department has already included a section on that. So maybe expanding a little more history about development related activities and links. I think that's probably a, a useful thing. Specifically, one specific thing I'd like to see, and we're asking for references, we'd like to have actual names and contact information if, if we're going to call people up, which I assume somebody's going to call somebody up. So I would add that to the RFQ. You're going to give us a reference? Give us a name, give us a contact information. That's my comment. Next. So what action can we take here, Mr. Twing? This, this, I, one of the things I asked right at the beginning, what you've given us here, this is not publication ready, right? This, this document.
Well, from staff's point of view, it's ready other than filling in the blanks of the, the dates. And as I indicated, those would be filled in as, as we narrow down the distribution dates. So from our standpoint, it's ready to send out. If you want to add something to it, we're looking for you to tell us what you want to add to it specifically. So that we can add it to it. So that's kind of where we're at. If you're happy as a, as a body with the draft that staff has provided. I would ask for a motion and a support and an action to approve and authorize its release upon determining the appropriate date. If you want to amend it, then I need to know what you want to stick into it specifically, not. I don't want to go back and rewrite it unless you want us to rewrite it with something and delay it another month or so.
All right, comments from the commissioners about that?
And thinking.
Okay, we'll allow, we'll allow for that. I guess as long as there's a moment of vitality, I would say that the, the time durations are something that I think we can probably talk about what we're thinking about. About the, the actual text of the, of the RFQ. How much time we think we need? I think that we certainly want to, to have time to get people to not only receive it in the ordinary course, whether they check with their MAP or the Mitten or what, I don't know all the ways you're going to deliver this, whether, you know, it's on the website and the newspaper, whatever. There has to be some time to allow people to to, to, to find it and absorb it. And if we expect them to do any study or research, we got to give them some time to do that. So I would say that this off the top of my head, I, I, it seems like a month from, from the first day of publication to getting the RFQs might be reasonable. I don't know what anybody else thinks, but that's what I, I would throw out as an initial proposition.
Well, definitely, I, if, if we get it out, as I said earlier, it's going to be, if you approved it this evening and then we got our schedule together, so that it, it's going to be end of January before submissions are going to be required. If not, sometime in February. So that's kind of our timeline on it. We've got to take into consideration, you've got Thanksgiving holiday and the Christmas, New Year holiday in there. So, you know, my bigger concern was that you wanted to see it faster than later. I have no, no problem with submissions being in February, but we're going to try and get it done so they come in, in the January, so.
Ms. Beeky.
We're having a two-tiered process and the, and the qualifications are supposed to be something relatively simple that are already, that firms know about. And then, and they can do a little research about us. And again, I would advocate at the very least to have a list of these keys, key reports and studies that supposedly are the foundation of our decision-making. And reflect again, our public input in past and, and which carries us forward. The response time doesn't have to be that significant. Because they supposedly know who already works for them. We're not asking for the budget. We're not asking for a plan. We're asking just for them to show us their past performance. On past performance, again, in my experience, limiting the pages or limiting the number of people that they're submitting, et cetera, so that you're a little bit making an apple to apple comparison even on a qualification. So it's easier for us to see. This is their description. This is their thing, rather than just a hodgepodge of different types of responses. I think there could be a little bit more specific parameters. And as far as the calendar goes, I think it's important even in the RFQ to put the anticipated calendar and timeline of the RFQ period, the RFP period, once we select those firms that will allow to bid it probably three to five, I would suspect. And then the overall period of project implementation, so that when they submit to us their staff and principals. Even in the qualifications, we'd like them to, not to show us who they have, but also who might be available. Now that could be split into the RFP a little bit. But it's very common, often you'll see certain people on a slate, but then when it comes time to do the work, unless you've specified that those people have to be available for the project. So if we don't give them the whole timeline, that makes it harder for them to reply in that sense. So then you're reviewing their qualifications, but you're not reviewing the actual people that you may get. And again, that may come in the RFP. It wasn't clear to me until this evening that we're going to do a two-tiered process. Anyway, so I think the calendar needs to be more specific, just than just the reviewing of this RFQ, but rather the calendar we anticipate for the entire timeline.
If I may, I'm going to come back to a point that was referenced earlier. I don't think it's wise to overthink this step. If, if interested parties want to submit a response to our RFQ. We should be presenting a unified and logic approach to how we want to proceed forward. So I hesitate again to, to overthink this step.
And I, and I do think though, the RFQ, as, as Joseph has written, it does ask for team members, team members' experience, who they are. And so that's who we're going to anticipate seeing. When the RFP gets back, we're going to expect to see the same people in it. When we write an actual contract with them that identifies the, the component parts and the scope of work and the, and the dollar and delivery dates. That's all going to occur. I think it's way premature to try and say we're going to do this and have it done by the end of two thousand twenty-two. The last master plan took two and a half years and kept, it got added to and added to in the sense of meetings. I, I see no point whatsoever in trying to go on a timeline beyond, beyond the RFQ and saying that we're going to do an RFP afterwards and, and getting there. That's just, that's just going to change. It's not going to be inked in stone until we have a contract. So I just don't see the value of adding that to this qualifications. You know, I, I, I think we could make a statement that if somebody has a request to see relevant plans as part of the question period that we have listed that Joseph has identified for questions. We'll get it to them. And if we get the same question from all of these submitting qualifications, they're all going to get the same answer. They're going to get it. If they don't ask for it, there's no reason to give it to them. As Joseph said, I just think we're way overthinking this initial step.
Commissioner Douglas and Mr. Gantina.
Yeah, with the greatest respect to Ms. Beeky's experience and the document that she's prepared here, I'm inclined to agree with staff on keeping the RFQ process general and trusting these applicants to know how to look for relevant information about our city. And I think even if they don't do that and they submit examples of past work that has no relevancy to a hundred-year-old inner ring walkable city with an active downtown. Then, you know, if, if they don't have that body of work, we're going to recognize that pretty quickly. I, I, I just, I feel like the RFQ process helps us sort out those people with a body of work in our arena and that the request for proposal process is the step where we give them more relevant information so that they can prepare a more accurate bid.
Ms. Gantina.
So I always approach, or I tried to approach these things with, through the lens of sustainability, which isn't, you know, fits all things all the time. However, I'd like to maybe offer up a modest revision for discussion that I think maybe helps to satisfy a lot of the discussion that we've had. And that's really related to in the about us section, if we potentially make reference to the fact that, and I forget the date, I apologize. The, the date that the city commission adopted the climate urgency resolution. And the authorization for the work that's happening on the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan simply stated as things that the city has done. To Mr. Casada's point about preferences, I do think this would maybe be, you know, perhaps a, a good way of slightly tipping our hand in terms of preferences that we would like to see experience around, or at the very least give firms an idea of the things that are important to us. And again, we've got, you know, the, the community engagement to kind of help support that. I guess I'll leave it out there for discussion in terms of, you know, I believe this might be a rather innocuous way to still be able to bring a little bit of specificity to the RFQ. And then the other items that Ms. Beeky had put forward certainly can make their way into the RFP eventually. So I guess that's my comment per discussion.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to ask a question because I don't know this part of the business, but if you're a master plan consultant, have you done any work in the last three years where you're not faced with somebody addressing sustainability and carbon footprint and climate issues? In other words.
I'd hope.
And isn't that very common these days? And aren't we going to see people with experience in that? They're going to tell us about it? Ms. Beeky shaking her head. So I'm not, you're in the business. Go ahead, tell us. It just seems to me that, isn't there something that a lot of planners are dealing with now?
I, I just wouldn't make the assumption that that's not the case for all communities or for all plans at this point. I think it's growing exponentially now, but I wouldn't suspect it's the case.
All right, thank you. All right. How do we, Commissioner Douglas?
So the, the document that, that the staff sent us says, just as a, in a passing reference, that we are a council manager form of government. And at the end of the day, this decision is a staff decision. I mean, we as a planning commission are not, you know, setting policy like the city commission does. So I think we really need to let the staff take what we've said under advisement. But leave it to them as the staff professionals and as the people who report to the city manager, who's the only one who reports to the city commission. Leave it to the staff to manage this process. And then I'm going to make a case that we as an entire commission have the opportunity to review the requests for the, the not the RFQs, but the Qs. Again, with the caveat that we may offer our opinions on that subject, but the decision at the end of the day is one of the, the staff that will be ratified by the city commission.
All right, thank you for that. Given that comment. Do we have further discussion? Do we have a motion? Mr. Curtis.
I, I don't have a motion yet, but I did want to just pick up on what Ms. Douglas just said. And, and it kind of has a question, I think, for Mr. Murphy here. I saw the, the work that Ms. Beeky did just today. I think, did the email just come today, the, the stuff you had? And I imagine Mr. Murphy wrote this draft before today. I, I, did you get to see that email that she sent, Mr. Murphy?
Yes, I did, late in the day.
Yeah, yeah, me too. So given the email you saw and the discussion you've heard, my question for Mr. Murphy is, is there anything that you think ought to be added, like in terms of the about us section, as Mr. Gantina kind of suggested, this is maybe relevant about us information? Anything come to, to you?
I don't believe at this point, no.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Is it a hand, Mr. Gantina? Yes, go ahead.
I guess the one final comment, I, I'd be okay moving forward at this point with the understanding that we as the planning commission during the formation of the RFP itself, will get another crack at this to be able to specifically include the things that we feel are important to the city. And again, from a sustainability perspective, specifically include things that have, that the, the, the community has told us is important to them. As long as we're going to get another crack at this and we do have the ability to, to review the things that are coming back, I, I I'm okay with moving forward and sort of not handcuffing staff to, to move this process forward at this point, knowing that it's coming back to us.
Okay, and I have a sort of a comment question. Because we do want to, I don't know if this has to be part of a motion, but we were asked to talk about the timeline. And I'm going to go back to that. I mean, we do have the holidays coming up. And Mr. Twing said responses in February would be fine with him. So I think we're talking about publishing this in the beginning of two thousand twenty-two. Is that what I understand?
The hope would be to publish it as soon as possible. If we can provide it to some, some agencies, some groups, so that they can accomplish that immediately, that's great. If we have to wait based on a publication timeline, we'll certainly do that, but we hope to release it well before Thanksgiving if, if available.
Oh, well, okay, so let's, let's, maybe. Oh, well, okay. So let's, let's, maybe I'm misunderstanding here. So would you, would you expect that the RFQ would be out there in publication between whatever, November 15th and February 1st?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't go out as late as February 1st, no. Mid-January, late January.
Okay, but, but several months? Okay, all right. All right. Any further discussion?
And I think part of that discussion though, again, is, is you're going to lose a week or more between the holidays where, where most people aren't working on this. And I, and I think in order to be fair to them, to, to give them some time after that to reply. So yeah, it, it's anticipated depending on when we get it all out published, that the deadline will be sometime in January. At the latest, it would be February, but.
And, and how the planning commissioners get their hands on this RFQ? Will it be distributed to us or?
The responses or the actual draft?
The actual draft.
We'll give it to you when we send it out.
Okay, because one of the questions that I had, and I think I heard the answer is go right ahead, is if planning commissioners who are familiar with the pool of potential candidates say, hey, I want, I want to make sure this particular consultant gets this. We're, you're okay with us sending it to them, say, hey, take a look at this, right? We can do that.
I don't care how they get it.
Okay.
It's a public document.
Yeah.
All right. Any, in, in interest of moving this forward after hearing the discussion, is there a motion to approve the draft request for qualifications? As, as discussed here and allow the staff to edit as they, as they perceive necessary and, and proceed to publication or something like that?
Do we need to approve anything? Maybe Mr. Ali Al, I see him down at the bottom of my screen.
Well, I guess from my standpoint, I don't, I don't need your approval to release a request for qualifications. My understanding was the planning commission wanted to be involved in the process and in reviewing the documents. So, and I've heard a lot of, I've heard a lot of different commentary as we've gone through this. So that's the only reason I was asking for a motion, so that the document that we are releasing, the planning commission is happy with.
Okay, so maybe the motion would be simply to request the department proceed with the RFQ?
Yes.
Is there such a motion?
I would be happy to make that motion. Yes, let's, I moved that the planning department proceed with the RFQ.
Is there a second? Mr. Gantina, seconds. All right, is there further discussion?
I would like to ask about the, because staff asked about us as a commission having some role in at least seeing the qualifications when they come in and evaluating. We didn't really come up with a plan for that. I don't think it needs to be part of this motion. But does staff want to hear something more on that discussion after this vote?
I don't necessarily need it this evening. When we get them back and after the deadline, if we've gotten 20 back, we'll ask the planning commission, does the whole planning commission want to see all of them? Or do you want to create a subcommittee to review them with staff? How do you want to proceed? But I think we can wait on that till we actually get them back and see what we have.
Right. Any further comment, discussion, question? All right, seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote on Mr. Curtis's motion. And I'm going to start with Mr. Curtis.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Gantina.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Beeky?
I guess I'll say no to be consistent with my arguments.
All right, Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So the motion passes, Mr. Tweng and Mr. Murphy, please proceed. All right.
Thank you.
I just dropped my agenda on the floor. Hold on.
I mean, you didn't just.
Sliding away. It's a concrete floor. Okay. The next order of business, it would appear, is the meeting schedule, religious holidays schedule. And I think, Mr. Tweng, why don't you just explain this for the record?
Every year about this time, we ask the planning commission to schedule your meeting dates for the, the next year. So we're looking at your meeting schedule for the year 2022. As part of that, we identify where there might be some conflicts with religious holiday. As you'll see, there's potentially two, April 12th and October 11th. If you simply wanted to acknowledge that those holidays that exist, there is a resolution at the bottom to continue with your standard meeting protocol, which is the second Tuesday of every month at seven o'clock.
All right, so do you require a motion and approval of the every Tuesday schedule without amendment?
I simply need you to adopt the resolution at the bottom of the memo that's in your back.
Oh, all right. That's one here. Okay, is there, is there a commissioner who would like to move to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Klooster moved to adapt the resolution as stated at, on the staff report there, which is to with due respect to the various affiliations, we're affirming the meeting time and dates as established, which is every Tuesday, first Tuesday of, or second, first Tuesday of the month. Is there a second? Seconds.
It is, just for clarification, that's the second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday of the month. Yes, thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, we're going to call for the vote and we'll start with Mr. Klooster.
Yes.
Mr. Gantina?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Beeky?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So we've adopted the resolution and we'll be meeting as previously scheduled. All right. Next order of business, we have the administrative plan approvals, Mr. Tweng or Mr. Murphy?
Well, the next item actually is item four in regards, do you want a, a motion to?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Member meeting remotely or in person? So I, I need a motion to either to hold them remotely at the December meeting or to go to an in-person meeting. I, I would point out that after the December meeting, all future meetings have to be in person starting in January.
All right, what is the sense of the commissioners? We've had this discussion, but time has marched on. Let's please, please give me your, your thoughts on this all the way around. Mr. Klooster?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm happy to resume in-person meetings starting in December. I think we, we had the, the one kind of intermediate there. We had some, some difficulties in a hybrid scenario. But I think the, the public engagement, at least from my experience, was more readily accessible in that format. And we can, can start moving back towards that.
Right. Next. Mr. Gantina?
I guess in looking at Oakland County numbers and Michigan numbers in general, I'm still a little bit concerned in terms of things just sort of not going in the correct direction. Considering the fact that we're going to be forced to go back to the in-person meetings in January anyways, I'd like to maybe still give ourselves a little bit more time. I'm okay with a remote meeting for December.
All right, thank you. The comments? Commissioner Douglas?
So having met in person at the city commission and, and trusting that the people on either side of me are vaccinated and with all of us wearing masks, I felt very comfortable meeting in person. And our contact with the public, I mean, the, you know, the public seating is well distant from us. So I'm, I'm very comfortable meeting in person.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'll just take the same position I took last time. I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable either way. But you know, my situation is different from every other person's situation here. And their comfort level, whatever health issue they may have. And if there's one person that wants to meet in virtual in December, I support it. And so, you know, I don't want to say that, you know, one person can draw, but I support. If there's just one person that wants to stay, then I'll be on the, on the side of that for December. It looks like inevitably January, we're going to be meeting in person by law based on how the state and county are doing things, but you know, I just think it's one team, whoever, you know, I, I just want to give that respect to whoever feels we should meet remotely one more time and I'm good with it.
All right, thank you. Other comments? Ms. Beeky?
I guess personally, I, I I would prefer again to have the meeting like this, although if everyone else decided to go, as long as there's a mask mandate in place, I would consider going. But considering this is a volunteer position and personally, I'm only meeting with family members in person at this time. I work remotely, so I guess I would prefer to continue in December remotely. Again, I acknowledge the maybe less interactive nature for people attending. But similarly, I've been cut out of meetings that went back to in person that I'm not comfortable attending, so it kind of goes both ways.
All right, thank you. I don't mind to pipe up. I, I've said before, I prefer the in-person meetings. But I'm, I'm sort of with the mayor on this. If we have team members who don't feel comfortable, and we just heard one, I don't have any problem going one more month through the, the virtual. And we are, we're going back in January more than likely, so I don't have a problem stretching one more month out in the virtual.
Well, if I may.
You're next.
I'd be willing to make a motion and see if it passes. One more time virtually on Zoom and then January brings what January brings, but I move for one more remote meeting.
All right, is there a second? Ms. Beeky, all right, I'll call for the vote. I'll start with Mr. Curtis.
Sorry, I was speaking to you. I vote yes.
All right, Commissioner Douglas?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Beeky?
Yes.
Mr. Gantina?
Yes.
Klooster?
No.
I'm a yes. So the motion passes. We'll meet virtually for December, which I expect will be the last time. And hopefully things will improve, so everybody will be comfortable in January. So, all right. What's the next, sorry, I almost skipped that. Now we're at administrative site plan approvals. Tell us about that.
What we do is just provide the planning commission with a list of site plans that have been reviewed and approved by planning division staff, this case between July 1st and September 30th of this year. It's simply an informational item to let you know what's been going on.
All right, any questions for the department about the administrative site plan approvals? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next, which is the road commission report. Any comments on this or is it also just informational for our review?
Yep, the next two items are just informational.
All right, very good. The, the, the item, what I have, item number F3 is the Michigan Planner Magazine for September, October 2021. And I think they always have good articles in here if we get to read that. All right. Before we adjourn, I want to give people the chance to make any final comments because frankly, I want to make one. And that is this. This goes back to the, our discussion. I thought it was a good discussion about the car wash. This has to do, and I guess I'm, I'm responding to, to Mr. Curtis's comment about, hey, if there's enforcement issues, then I, what I, I don't know if you were alluding to, enforcement takes care of it. But you know, here's what I did. I went out to the Tommy's in, in Auburn Hills. And I stood there at the property line and I looked at it and I said, if this is what they're going to do in Royal Oak, I don't think this, I don't think this complies with our ordinance. And in fact, we heard from the petitioner that they're going to do almost the same thing. But I can't, you know, on a prospective basis or even a, after the fact, I looked at the ordinance. I don't know how you necessarily have given guidance to petitioners and citizens and staff and planning commissioners about what is and what isn't a violation or what complies with the light and sound ordinances. And what I understand is that these are taken on a case-by-case basis because they're different. Somebody mentioned that Woodward has a lot of sound. I know that. And that makes a difference. And there may be other light pollution issues where you, difficult to measure something. But I just think that this is something that in the future, I, I have a little struggle with. Because I, I go around the city. You guys know how I feel about lighting. I think, I think well-studied lighting is a, is a huge factor in the built environment. And I think poorly considered, overly lit areas are not only distracting and sometimes dangerous, but ugly and, and diminish the experience of the built environment. So lighting's a big deal to me and I don't, I don't feel terribly comfortable with the fact. I don't know how to move forward on, on seeing that our ordinances with the ordinances seem perfectly reasonable. But how do you measure a foot candle? How do you measure the decibels? If you go up and down Woodward, the sign for Lover's Lane, I'm sure it's too bright. I don't know how to measure that. I mentioned the car washes. I'm sure those are overly bright. And just like the Tommy's I went up to see in Auburn Hills, I think that one's overly bright. How do we measure that? It's not very clear in the ordinance. So it's something that I may want to further delve into in the future. Okay, the other comments?
Well, very briefly, in terms of an enforcement issue.
Yes.
We, we deal with it on an enforcement issue. Obviously, anyone that has gone through site plan approval has a provision that says they have to comply with the light, light standards specifically. There is not anyone on city staff that's an expert in lighting. How we generally dealt with it are variety on a case-by-case basis. One of the most recent ones was not even a site plan issue. It was two homeowners complaining about each other. The light that was above the entrance door off the driveway was too bright and shining into the first floor of the residence to the other side. It was an ongoing back and forth dispute. At the end of the day, we sent a firm out, an engineering firm with a lighting expert, had them do a light study and give us a report. And as, as it turned out, the light coming out of the house in the bedroom was brighter than the light on the house with the garage. So, and, and the one off the garage complied. We had already asked that person to simply shield it so that it was looking downward, but the complaint continued. So always, I want to, I guess my point is just because there's a complaint does not mean there's a violation. What someone perceives as being too bright isn't necessarily too bright under the ordinance. We've also had occasions where when Woody's used to exist prior to Top Cat things, they had a big spotlight roof that lit their flag. That was great and fine and dandy until you build the fifth and build Skyloss and it's now shining in to people's condominiums. And so they start complaining. So we deal with them on a, on a regular basis. And at any time anybody feels there's something that's too bright, let us know. If we've got some actionable item, we'll take care of it. If there's nothing we can do about it, then there are those occasions as well. But I don't know that you can write an ordinance and I don't expect any of you to be out measuring lights. My staff isn't going to go out and measure lights. We're going to either require a property owner to, to hire a firm to do it, prove they're in compliance, or we'll hire somebody to prove they're not compliant. or we'll hire somebody to prove they're not compliant. So.
Well, uh, Ms. Beeky?
I was just going to ask pertinent to that, in, in what process or when are these ordinance drafted or, or amended? Is that, is that, that it's not a part of the master plan because the master plan is, is, well, it is three-dimensional. So maybe the light and noise should be added to the list I drafted.
Well, if, the, the actual provisions for lighting are in, in the zoning ordinance as well as the decibels on the, on the uh noise provisions. Those are generally drafted by the consultant with their experts and their, their field of experts that they bring to the table as to what are appropriate standards in a community. I would, I would not expect the public to give any input on those expert standards unless they're an expert in the field.
I mean, I think our current ordinance, which I just, I was reading the other day because there is a business that just put their lights spotted out rather than down. And we do have, it does say downlights rather than um out, but um, but the enforcement requires people to call in to, to complain.
Well, not always. The code enforcement officer could be driving by or somebody, staff could be driving by and see it. And it's simple enough to tell somebody in turn, or a lot of the lights that are on hinges change their direction and we've got to go out and tell people, put them back down. Uh, that's a fairly common occurrence. Um, what we did with gas station canopies with all the newer ones, all their lights have to be recessed up in the, into the canopy. Some of the older ones, they hung down and the light shined out. Even though they didn't violate the requirement at the property line, they had glare. Um, and as you would look at them, so we can change provisions and, and how we deal with things. And that will be through the, the, the things that are in the zoning ordinance will be dealt with during that process. Uh, nuisance things are in a separate ordinance, so.
I, I'll just follow up with a comment there because you've mentioned gas stations and so did some of the, the public when it came to the Pier One site. If you go out and I encourage, uh, I encourage commissioners and, and staff to do this. If you go out to the gas station, the Shell gas station just south of where the Tommy's going to be, that petitioner did, I think, an excellent job of lighting their property. The light is, for the most part, stays on the property. It's downlighting. It doesn't glare. The light on the building is uh, is decorative without being glaring. It's subdued. I think they did a great job. You go right down the street to Twelve Mile and Woodward and that station, which I think recently redid its lighting, they're not recessed. That light is flying all over in every direction. It's, I, I can't believe that it would be compliant. Now, some would have to go check it. But if twelve, the Twelve Mile Woodward gas station is compliant with our, with our ordinance, then we need to change the ordinance because we need things more like the Shell station that are more uh studied and responsible. So I think it's, I think it's a, it's an issue that has uh, uh merit and weight in terms of creating a, a built environment. That's my view. It's been my view. Maybe you guys, uh, I, maybe I say it too much, but uh it's an interest to me. All right. Any other comments, Mr. Curtis?
Speaking of issues whose time has come, I believe adjournment is an issue.
Is that a motion? Is that a motion?
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Mr. Gantina seconds?
Yeah.
A third? I want that. All right, I will call for the vote to adjourn. Ms. Beeky? Yes?
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Mayor?
Too late.
Too late. Very adjourned. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Gantina?
Yes.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, and I thank you all for uh providing your insights. Appreciate it. We'll see you next time on a virtual meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.